Committee of the whole meeting for Tuesday, June 3rd, 2025. Has appropriate meeting notification been made?
It has, Your Honor.
Would you please call roll?
Alderman Outman-Clothe?
Here.
Alderman Ellis?
Here.
Alderman Spiegelberg?
Here.
Alderman Mulder?
Here.
Alderman Shellpepper?
Here.
Alderman McConnell?
Here.
Alderman Youngworth?
Here.
Alderman Rosick?
Here.
Great, we're gonna move on to committee business, which is a presentation of water treatment chemicals. Scott Osborne from our utility departments. Mr. Osborne?
Yeah, well, just real quick.
You wanna start off?
Yes, I just, Alderman Rosick's brought this topic up a couple times, wanting us to come and talk about what chemicals we're putting in our water. Working with the water utility and Kevin and Scott and their team, they put together the presentation that they're gonna show tonight. So, the purpose of the presentation is to educate you as to what we're doing, the amounts that we're putting in, what the chemicals are doing for us, and the legal authority that we went through in order to put those in. We're not looking for any definite action tonight. I know that there's been some concerns raised about, you know, one of the fluoride and potentially the phosphates. But we wanted to provide this information tonight, educate you where we're at, and then you can provide direction if you want more information, if you want us to look something, if you want us to come back at another meeting, more than willing to do that. We just thought this would be a really good first step, so.
Thank you.
Mr. Osborne?
Thanks, Mark. Thanks, council. For the new members, I'm Scott Osborne, water superintendent. I'm on my 15th year at the utility, so excited tonight to-
That happened.
Yeah, I know. Right. Excited tonight to talk water treatment chemicals. If there's no questions or whatnot, I'll just jump right in. A little background, we add three chemicals to our water in a Condam walk. Chlorine, it's used for disinfection, killing microorganisms, bacteria, all things that are commonly found in groundwater. I dug around, talked to Mark, all historic records show we've always added chlorine. We've been pumping water to the system since 1899. Fluoride helps prevent tooth decay. In the spring of 1955, with the backing of a city vote, the common council approved the addition of fluoride. We did, Tina reported back, we did find that resolution. She did some digging down. I haven't had it and read it, supposedly we have. Orthophosphates, that's used for corrosion control, builds up a coat on the pipe and sequesters iron. In the mid 1990s, the DNR required us to do a corrosion control study and recommended the addition of a chemical to sequester iron. Mark can attest, that was a long, tough process. And in fall of 1995, the utility began adding blended orthophosphate. It was called Aquamag. Before we get kinda into the nuts and bolts, just some definitions that'll pop up throughout. Maximum contaminant level, those are standards set by the EPA. Kind of the legal threshold limit of a substance, we can't go above that. A lot of things you'll see are in milligrams per liter, that's the same as parts per million. So, there's just an explanation of what parts per million is, and just some analogies. Parts per million is like a minute in two years, an inch in 16 miles, right? It's a very small. We dose that parts per million. I'll show you parts per billion and parts per trillion. We take water samples and we have to adhere to standards that are in parts per billion, or the latest one, the PFAS ones are in parts per trillion. So, you can just see on the analogy, it's a very small unit. Here's just a schematic of our water system and the process. What I wanted you to gain from this is, we basically add chemicals from three different areas in the city. Up in the north, we have two wells on Lake Bluff Drive. All three chemicals are added and it's pumped directly to the system. There's no reservoir or anything to store for contact time. Middle of the city, the powerhouse, three wells pumped to the powerhouse reservoir. All the chemicals are added there and then it's pumped to the distribution system. Then on the south side, well seven, same thing. All three chemicals added when the pump turns on, goes into the reservoir, and then it's pumped to the system. Our well eight will be coming online at the end of the year. That does exactly the same thing as well seven. One of the important things is each chemical used is documented every morning on pump rounds. Any adjustments to dosages are made accordingly to stay within our required parameters. Let's dig a little into chlorine. We treat with gas chlorine. 150-pound cylinders. We talked, disinfects against bacteria, viruses. We dose at our three spots there, between 1.5 and 3.3 milligrams per liter or parts per million. Basically, we're doing that to maintain a little bit of a chlorine residual out in the system. At our worst spot, we're at least a .05 or a .1. The MCL, maximum contaminant level, we could dose up to 4.0. We have a specific standard operating procedure for gas chlorine, very specific. If we ever do a cylinder changeout, when they get low, you can see here, right? There's two of them on a scale. When the second one gets low, there's spares over here. We have to do that with two employees. It's just very, it's for safety. Success is based on safe water sample history, consistent residuals in the system, and just our overall safety record. Fluoride, we treat with hydrofacilic acid. Documented dental benefits, strengthens enamel, resistant to acid attacks, reduces cavities. Success is based on, we do a specific split sample with the state lab every month. And again, we're visiting those stations every day and monitoring the daily use. Follow the current dosing recommendations of .7 milligrams per liter. The dosage does take into account naturally occurring levels. We have very low naturally occurring levels in a Condam walk, but that's taken in consideration in our dosing. MCL is 4.0. Studies, everyone has read the recent studies that have come out that suggest if you're drinking water in excess of 1.5 milligrams per liter, that could be harmful to your health. We're nowhere near that, we never get to that level, we're .7 or below. Orthophosphates, talked, we treat with Aquamag for corrosion control. Success is based on lead and copper sample results being below the MCL and low water quality complaints. Hopefully, we're not getting a lot of cloudy, yellow, or rusty water. That's what orthophosphates trying to keep in suspension. Primary benefit is that iron sequestration. We dose .8 to 1.6, MCL is four. Currently, on our daily rounds, yeah, we're at about a .3, and that's just, .3 is the aesthetic standard. Anything higher than that, you'd start to see some of that red water or yellow water. And we do give a few water quality complaints, but very minimal. Recently, last couple of years, we've done some citywide upgrade projects. The pictures here are kind of example of one of them for both orthophosphate and fluoride. We've gotten away from a big bulk tank with a day tank sitting on scales. The scales are really expensive, seems like they need a lot of repair, maybe even every year. We've went, and I don't know if you can see, but there's a floor drain here. If there's a spill here, it goes down to the floor drain, goes right to Tim at the treatment plant, and phosphorus is one of their bugaboo's, so they do not like. One that we add so much for orthophosphate, but this was a specific improvement we did. So, we eliminated one, the expensive scale. We have, it's a radar measurement system, just shoots down a radar, gives us the same measurement. And then, very simple, but this is a tank inside of a tank. Instead of going down the floor drain, if there was a breach in this tank, the annular space between both of them, nothing would hit the floor. So, that, to me, that was a good solution for what we were trying to do. Orthophosphate, we did last year. Fluoride, we're in the middle of completing this year. Long-term planning, really the only way you get rid of a lot of the orthophosphate is removing all the lead service lines. Monitoring, wanna talk about monitoring. In addition to all the water samples we do, our crews visit every one of those sites every day. They collect information on water pumped and the chemical consumption. They come back to the office, they enter that into their spreadsheets, and make sure it's within the standards and the protocols. If not, they would do some adjusting. All our water operators are first-class operators, certified, they have annual training requirements. Our staff collects and analyzes samples in-house, daily for fluoride, so we're checking that dosage every day. Two times a week, we grab from our sources and we check iron phosphate in our residual chlorine, and then we make adjustments if necessary. Success is based on staying within those recommended dosage ranges, safe water sample history, and water quality complaints. And this is just a picture of our lab. This is the equipment that we use every day to test those parameters. They're writing things on the clipboard and then entering them into a spreadsheet. Just big picture, here's our current chemical inventory. We add phosphate and have that at every station. Fluoride and chlorine are not at one and two because they're all added at the powerhouse reservoir. One, two, and three all go to the same spot. So, that's just an example of what we have out there. Cost, I looked two years back and just didn't average here. We, this year, for example, we have a $100,000 budget. 70% of that will be orthophosphate. Chloride is about 20, 25%, and yeah, you see fluoride is a very small amount. Talk safety. Gas chlorine, very specific, there's a separate chlorine room. Two operators are assigned to do the cylinder changeouts. When they enter those rooms, automatic ventilation kicks in. We're trained to use the respirator, we're trained to identify minor leaks and repair them. If there's anything bigger, it's Western Lakes, and they come and deal with a bigger event. Fluoride, I just added the, we did the secondary containment to take care of any spills. And then again, we're verifying dosages every day. Same with orthophosphate, we did the secondary containment. Orthophosphate is considered a food-grade source, it's safe for portable water. And again, we're checking those dosages every day. Currently, there's no SCADA alarm that would tell us if we're either over or underfeeding. We would find that out the next morning when we visit and see, hey, we used a lot or we didn't use any. Chloride is used for the disinfection, it was a DNR requirement. Fluoride for tooth decay, that's a common council resolution. I didn't have time, I didn't have a picture of the resolution, but in our utility hallway, we've got this picture back April 1955. Looks like they had a revote. It went from a yes of plus 52 to a yes of only plus 3. So, some interesting facts from the past. Orthophosphate, again, a DNR requirement, and that helps us sequester iron and cope the pipes, do not let lead and copper come into our system. Some solutions, I mean, when I looked at this, it was like, wow, we use a lot of orthophosphate. So, right, just some ideas and solutions, and we have ongoing programs for both these. Right, we're gonna significantly decrease orthophosphate use when we get rid of all of our lead service lines. We still have over 700 lead service lines. The old brass meters have lead components. We're in the middle of our mass meter changeout. We changed out 1,000 meters since last June, and our goal is 2,600 by the end of '26. So, our guys think they can do that, and we won't have to contract that out. Once all the lead service lines are removed, then we can talk, right? Part of our future planning is, we've got an iron filter at eight, but if, right, if you really wanna get rid of a lot of the orthophosphate, switch to iron filtration, we'll talk about planning that in the future. We did look when we brought well eight to you. We did look at just treating well eight with chemicals. That was when Kevin was here, he wasn't real happy because it would put them in violation. Here's their line of, their permit. We're right at it right now with what we add. We add about 12 pounds a day. We're about 9% of the total phosphorus that goes to the treatment plan. So, with, when we looked at with well eight filtration, it drops that 12 to 9.7. We kinda, we ran it out, in our projected 2040 pumping, we're back up to that 12 pounds a day, so.
Can I ask you a question, Scott?
Yeah.
And, I mean, we're required to take the phosphate out of the water before we discharge treated sewer water, right? I mean, we have our own phosphate requirements that we meet when we have effluent, right? Out of our wastewater.
Yes. Tim here? Tim's-
Correct.
So, we have to, so we, we're putting the phosphates in to protect these lead laterals, but then also removing it again on the backside. It seems like we're kinda adding it and then taking it out at the same time. How many, okay, that was it, okay.
That's correct.
Yeah, and I just wanted to confirm.
Yeah, no, you're correct on that. The other thing to remember is that we're only a minor part of the amount of phosphorus that's in that wastewater stream, as noted the 9% of the total.
Right, right.
So, there's other sources providing-
For sure, for sure.
Have a question? Sorry, what would the, maybe we don't have this. What would the cost, what's it costing the city to remove 9% of that? Like, do we have any idea? That's a-
That's a, that's a-
That's a hard question, sorry.
That's a Tim question, but-
Okay.
But these are-
These guys are taking notes. You know, if you could let me know any questions that you have or any information you want going forward, we'll make sure that we can get that back to you.
Well, a pump station, ongoing construction right now, located in Peps Farms. 2,000 gallons a minute capacity, we'll have an iron filter. And that one significantly decreases the phosphorus to the wastewater treatment plant with the iron filter. Set to start pumping water right around Thanksgiving time of this year. So, this is a very current picture. This is the backwash holding tanks, this is 130,000-gallon, 13-foot-deep structure. And then the reservoir, it's 150,000-gallon portable ground buried reservoir. So, they're finally all backfilling, they're starting the walls and starting to go vertical here this week.
It's impressive.
Yeah, it is, it's really cool.
Some key takeaways. Removal of all lead service lines is the key improvement needed to. It shouldn't say eliminate, it should say reduce orthophosphates. To me, we're never gonna get rid of adding some orthophosphate, because you still, orthophosphates are for lead and copper corrosion control. We still have copper, you know, all over the place. Water system still has over 700 lead service lines. And we just talked, the city's contribution is 9% of phosphorus. Fluoride dosages, we're at the .7, and it's a very minimal expense every year. Chloride safety is critical. We've got a specific SOP, and we do training for our guys on chlorine. And again, Western Lakes is our go-to in case of an emergency. Recommendations we came up with, utility staff will continue investigating changes at the state and federal level regarding any of the water treatment chemicals. Will continue to monitor the calculated dosage, residuals at the source and the distribution system every day, week, month, and adjust them accordingly. Continue to follow all the required safety regulations, keep current on all the training. Our operators have to do a certain amount of continuing education and training every year to keep their license. Will continue to replace all the public-side lead service lines with the annual street projects. This year is McDowell Court, Walnut, and South Silver Lake. There's about 55 full, so at least we'll get our half. And right now, there's only about five people on the private side, so that's the one where we have to try to find potential funding for the private side. Utility planning will continue to include future filtration in our long-term budgeting. And, right, we're always, we always wanna increase public knowledge on the subject. We can beef up information on our website, we can bring the information to community events, and we provide things at utility committee meetings and in these type of meetings. Next steps, this is just discussion, so there's no action requested, but yeah, like Mark said, if you need any follow-up information on any of them, let us know and be happy to help you.
No, Scott, wonderful summary, and I think that was a great presentation for the council. I'd like to open it up to council members if you have questions for Scott, or Lucas, or Kevin, we'll happy to come up. Eric?
Yeah, so, thank you, Scott, that was awesome. Thanks, Matt, for bringing it up, and I do wanna say thanks to Mark for earlier this afternoon, kinda sharing some of this. I think I'm gonna call you Professor Frye for a little bit. Felt like I was in a chemistry class for a while there, but again, thank you for this. The only thing I would bring up is, it seems to be a bit of a trend, something for us to talk about, right? I know that there's a few states already that have eliminated fluoride from their water. Florida's one of them, don't quote me, there's a couple others, I forget who they are. So, maybe just something for us to look into, reasons why they went that direction outside of government recommendations and those types of things. I think it would be worth looking at, right, as we can, it's a super low cost, but I'm thinking more from a health, potential health perspective. But I mean, lots, I love, there seems to be lots of measurements in place, and obviously, you guys take that seriously. But I think that piece of it is something we should look at, based on the trending of other communities taking that specific fluoride out of their water. That's the only-
Yeah, it doesn't appear to be a huge financial gain, but if it's a health gain, makes sense. Alderman Outman-Clothe?
And I do appreciate how you put in there, like, the benefits of having fluoride in the water. But one kind of interesting fact that I heard a while ago, and, I mean, I Googled it to see how true it was, and it did come up, so just, I'm just gonna leave it there. But the first, like, toothpaste in the United States that started to include fluoride was also in 1955. So, is the decrease in cavities because we're putting it in the water, or because of the toothpaste on the market? Now, granted, my family's just one of many families, we don't drink the city water. We go to Delsman. We go to Delsman, my great uncle owned that land, my family grew up on it. I have four kids, out of my four kids, one kid has one cavity. So, but we also do use fluoride toothpaste, we just don't drink fluoride water. So, I do agree, like, it would be, I think, something worth looking into, especially knowing other states have already done it. And that was very interesting, what you shared about the vote, how it barely got passed. And you said it had to go to a second vote, or like a-
That's what the picture says.
Yeah, I mean-
A recount, some things never change.
But great presentation, I appreciate it.
Alderman Rosick?
Yeah, thanks a lot, and city staff, thank you guys for putting a lot of effort to provide us this information. It's something I'm a little passionate about. The National Toxicology Program from the U.S. Department of Health and Human Services has studied this, and exposure above the 1.5 NPL is considered toxic to children and can actually reduce, you know, brain development and cognition. That's why the recommendation is to stay below that level. But with all the other, and one of the, and I sent that report on to city staff. One of the reasons I asked for us to look into this was because of some of the recent, you know, push to get fluoride out of the water. To Eric's point, Florida, Utah have already outlawed it. Our DHS secretary is recommending to the CDC that they stop recommending adding fluoride to the water because of all the sources of fluoride in the toothpaste, in the mouthwash, in floss. I mean, it's in all this stuff already. And the toxicology, National Toxicology Program actually doesn't talk just about drinking water, talks about exposure. So, if your exposure is above the 1.5, that's where you get to potentially toxic levels. Fluoride's also one of those things that your typical filter in your refrigerator can't filter, it doesn't filter it. So, I can't take it out. So, if I wanna drink city water, which I do drink city water, and I don't have cavities, I can't, my filter on the fridge doesn't filter fluoride. So, I have to drink the fluoride whether I want it to or not. It's filtering other things potentially in the water that I don't want. But overall, I think our water is extremely healthy, I think we do a great job. Couple things from the presentation, I would like to see us get a SCADA upgrade, whatever we need to do to get the alarms if we're over or under-treating. Obviously, I don't care if we under-treat, but for sure on the over-treatment of the chemicals. So, if there's some upgrade you need for that SCADA to alarm us.
Scott, can you explain the SCADA for everyone here, including me? I understand it's an alarm system. How, is this something that costs $5,000, $200,000? I don't know the scale.
Yeah, the SCADA system's in place to add an extra, you know, nuance or-
It's an extra alarm and control, right?
An extra checks and balance, which sound good.
That's not a big deal.
It's not a big expense?
It'll be an expense, and we'll investigate that, but it's not a big deal in the whole SCADA program.
Do you, I guess my question is, when it comes to an expense, it can be a big expense, or it can be a tolerable expense?
We'll have to investigate that.
Okay, super, super.
There's a couple of different ways. One, you could have equipment on at each site that's constantly monitoring the fluoride level in the water, and you could get an alarm for that. What we had discussed when we were going through the presentation is that we have this radar on the scale, or on the barrels, so that we know how much it's being used, and maybe if we could set a set point that says if we use more than an inch in six hours to-
To notify, yeah.
Because then we would know that more chemical was going into the system than what we would normally see.
Whatever's the best way to alarm us to an over-
Right.
Because, you know, chlorine also, I mean, chlorine's obviously needed in the water to destroy bacteria and to make it healthy and safe to drink on a regular basis. But if you overchlorinate, chlorinate, you overfluorinate, you can cause, you know, some pretty significant issues. So, whatever you guys think is the best way to alarm, whether it's SCADA, whether it's a radar alarm.
So, I think what we're, what we're hearing so far is a little bit more detail, looking into why other states are not using or discontinued fluoride. Other aspect is, let's look into alarming system. If there's a way we can even add one more step to make it safer, let's see if we can go down that path. And we're working on our capital budget right now, so the timing's kinda good for that. If you could work with Mark on that, that'd be great.
Mayor, I'm sorry, I had one other comment. Me personally, I would like to see us go down the route in the next year to eliminate the fluoride from the water. That's just me, I'm just one Alderman out of eight, but I've heard from people in the community about it. There is interest, especially as other states start to do this, and as our health secretary in the country is suggesting this isn't needed, at least at the levels we're doing it, I would like to explore either eliminating completely or reducing the amount we're actually fluorinating. So, maybe we don't do the .7, it's a .35, or it's a .25. So, if we think there's some importance to it still, at that level, we could still do something, but maybe not up to the .7 level, so.
One of the interesting things that I heard, and thank you, Scott, was the naturally occurring fluoride in our community is very low.
Yeah.
So, I think we have to look at what others are doing, but we also have to put it in perspective to what affects just Oconam walks in our wells. I don't know the answer to that, but that was an interesting concept. Alderman Ellis?
I concur with Alderman Rosick. I've also heard from some of the residents that the water, especially in my area, has been a little yellow. And I don't know if it's because we're flushing them out, or whatever the case is, but I'd really like to know. Maybe you can speak to me later on why that is, okay?
Sure.
If you can do that, that'd be great.
Okay. Any other questions from council? Great, great update for everybody, and I think we have some-
Really appreciate it.
Some marching directions, anything? Everybody on this side's kinda quiet, everybody good? All right.
So, if any, if you think of anything, reach out to me, email me, and we'll put together the information, either do another presentation, or at least provide the information to the council.
I think what's important is that when we come back, we have stuff that we're very confident in, the facts, the numbers, all of those, just like you did this time. So, I don't wanna rush something until, just to get it in front of us. Do what you think, Scott, you and your team feel will give us the best information to make decisions. So, thank you. Oh, Alderman Mulder?
I don't really have an opinion on this, so I'll speak.
Um, I don't really have an opinion on this, so I'll speak. I think it'd be good to, I mean, this is a medical, it's a medical, um, decision we're making for the community at some level, right? There are a lot of people who don't, um, maybe have the knowledge they have, we heard from the water side of things, I wonder if it would be good to get a medical physician, a dentist, some other people in here to make commentary about it?
That's a great point, I actually, I have someone that I have identified that could come and actually speak on, on that issue.
I think it's, I don't, I don't think the science is sol, I don't think there's, I don't think there's settled science on this, is what I, I think is where it lands in my mind from the research I did prior to this, so I, I think it's, um, I think it's, it would be good to get good community input. As we saw seventy years ago, it was a fifty-fifty, and I bet it's fifty-fifty today, so it's a decision we shouldn't take lightly, cause it does impact dental health, whether it impacts young children's IQ as well is something we should know, um, but there is a known positive impact, does there, is there a negative impact that outweighs that? That's what we need to determine for our community.
And I anticipate when we look into the medical aspect, we're gonna hit, hit multiple points of view, both for and against it, so I think if we're gonna go down that path, we need to pick more than just one person.
Sure.
And we need to do a few people, and if you guys are game to do that, that'd probably be another committee of the whole, because we probably need an hour or something for that discussion, because they are the medical professionals with that expertise, not us, so, good comments.
One, one other thing, I'm sorry, not, not off the Matt's point, but one of my other notes I wrote down, I forgot, the, the phosphates is, is a big deal, cause we're putting it in and taking it out, it's also something we're adding that we're all drinking, although it's food-grade level, whatever. We, it sounds like we have seven hundred lead laterals still in the city, I'd like to find out, you know, or, or get at some point where those lead laterals are, and, and maybe some type of plan for the next five to ten years, what we do to actually eliminate that. Is it, is it prioritizing, like, a lot of these are under roads, so does that mean we do Elm Street this year instead of Maple Street this year, bec, even though Maple's a little worse, Elm can get us to these lead laterals, right?
That's it, we've been doing that, that's part of our last few years of planning.
And prioritizing the streets, you know, even if they're a little better than the other one, you know, they're one grade better than the other one, prioritizing that street to get the lead out.
And that works on the public side, the problem is, the private side does not have to do it, right? And it's a five thousand dollar cost, and there's no money for that.
And I think the, I think what I hear, I'm hearing Alderman Rosick say is he'd like to maybe shift the priority from the perception that it's just based on roads, to be more based a little bit more on the lead laterals.
True.
It's all, it's all, partially, it's all a big picture of it. Alderman Mulder?
Yeah, I, I'd like to see it, I, I agree with you, you know, if it's two thousand dollars a lead lateral, that's one-point-four million dollars to clean it up, that's half of what we're gonna spend on roads moving forward, we could, we could clean it up in three years if we took a half million dollars out of roads. And, uh, and doing the private side, just do the private side.
Yeah, I, I.
It'll take us decades and decades and decades to get the private side done unless we do it, and I know a lot of people have spent their own mark, money already doing the private side, but there are times where we help private citizens with go wrong on their property.
I, I think it's a really, no, I think that's a great, no, I think that's a great discussion, Matt, I hundred percent agree with you.
You should have the discussion.
That, at, at some point, if we get to these private sides and it costs us an extra ten grand or twenty grand on an entire road project to help with those laterals, what do we, what do, it's a tail wagging the dog at this point, you know? And then we keep putting, and we keep spending eighty grand a year on the ortho-phosphates being added, and then we have to spend money to take it out at the wastewater side.
Right, we can debate up and down fluoride, we know the negative impact of what that science is.
Definitely cognitive problems from the lead.
Well, the reason I asked for the nine, like, what the nine percent cost, if it costs a hundred thousand years, we're spending a hundred thousand years, and we can eliminate that nine percent by fixing all of the private lead lines.
It'll help, but I think what Scott was saying is you'll never eliminate everything, you're never gonna eliminate completely chloride, and the ortho-phosphates, you still need to some level, but your point's well taken, and, and I think, Scott, what we're hearing is maybe more of a, uh, having the, uh, utility, um, committee, uh, take this maybe on as a lead, to try to really come up with, okay, here's what it could look like in one, three, five years, and maybe have a joint utility and DPW committee meeting, because we have the roads at the same time. Work on it on a committee level, and then bring it to the council and say, hey, we've dug into this, this is kind of a direction, and so, I know that adds a lot, but I think it actually might save a lot too. I think a lot of great comments tonight.
Hey, I'm happy to lead the utility committee to do that and work on that, cause that's, I mean, this is something I'm passionate about, so.
Okay, any other questions for Scott? Thank you very much, appreciate all the hard work. Without any other questions, I'd like to entertain a motion to adjourn. The committee of the whole?
Some of?
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, folks, we're gonna start promptly at seven-thirty with the common council meeting, so we have a, about a ten-minute break. Thank you all for coming.
I'd like to call to order the City of Oconomawak Common Council Meeting for Tuesday, June 3, 2025. Has appropriate meeting notification been made?
Yes, Your Honor.
If we would all please rise. Lucas Kane, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Lucas. Well done. Would you please call roll, Gina?
Alderman Altman-Clothe, here. Alderman Ellis.
Yep.
Alderman Spiegelberg.
Here.
Alderman Mulder.
Here.
Alderman Shellpepper.
Here.
Alderman McConnell.
Here.
Alderman Youngworth.
Here.
Alderman Rosick.
Here.
We're going to start off with our public hearing. The public hearing is to discuss, give you the opportunity to share your viewpoints on the Costco LUP amendment. The purpose of the, is to hear public comment to amend the land use map within the city's Comprehensive Plan 2050 and rezone 23.2667 acre site, which is to be created by a future certified survey map. The site is located at Pabst Farm Boulevard, north of I-94, west of Sawyer Road, and is identified as easternmost portion of the tax key OCOC 0630.999.017. The land is designated on the city land use map as business park use and zone business park BP. The request is to change the land use map to a commercial office use and rezone the site for general commercial zoning. If approved, the applicant intends to construct a 161, 161 square foot Costco wholesale warehouse store.
161, thousand.
Thousand, yeah. Costco warehouse store, including an attached tire center and a detached vehicle fuel facility containing 12 gasoline pumps. For the taxable, for the table of allowable uses in section 17.106 of the city of zoning ordinance, the uses of gasoline sales and the vehicle service require a conditional use permit in the general commercial zoning district. So we're going to kick this off, this public hearing with a summary from our planning director, Mr. Jason Gallo. Jason?
Good evening, Mayor. Council members, I'll give a brief overview and then we'll open it up for the public comments. We have several different applications being requested, so what I did was I bundled them. It was a very lengthy public hearing notice, but there's basically three things that are on the agenda that pertain to this one public hearing. Mayor talked about a land use plan amendment. That is a plan that the city has that shows what the designated future best use of that property is. They would like to change that plan, and if that's changed, then they would like to rezone the land to be consistent with the update to the plan. And then finally, a conditional use permit for the gasoline sales and the automotive service center where they sell tires. So I'll go through all of this tonight. This picture on the screen that's in front of you, this is their most recent architectural rendering showing what the store would look like. This is not on for you to review and approve. This is an architectural commission, but it's always good for you to understand what the project would look like. So the site, it was described in the public hearing notice between Pabst Farms Boulevard, that's the street here, and I-94, and it'd be west of Sawyer Road, which is here. So we all know I-94 and the Fleet Farm and the woods. So this is where the proposed Costco store is going. This is the site plan showing it. I'm going to get into this a little bit more detail, but this is kind of showing the green space, the parking lots, the various access points out onto the Pabst Farms Boulevard, coming in to the roundabout to get you to either the gasoline area or the parking field, and then there's various access points. These, they don't know the future of this. It could be, could be potential outlets for commercial purposes, or it could be additional parking if that's warranted. So how does this fit in with the land use of the whole area of Pabst Farms? I wanted to just kind of put, there's a lot of vacant land out here, so I just wanted to tell you what the intentions are. First of all, this is the Costco site that we're talking about right in here. You can see it's vacant. These two areas are in the Village of Summit, so we can't control that, but it's zoned business park down here. So this is vacant land. We really don't know what's going to happen up here adjacent to the residential uses. Then we have some vacant land here. The woods, those aren't being touched. And then we have the Pabst 59, they're moving dirt there. We have the Fleet Farm that was approved several years ago, and recently in the news, Marcus bought 16 acres of land right in here. So this is, you can see it's along I-94, it's kind of interstate development taking place. So we have this land use map that's in the plan of 2050. That's our crystal ball that goes out that far, and it shows it as the blue business park, and they would like to change it to red, commercial and office. I want to stress that these two different designations of the business park and the office and commercial are very compatible uses. There's a lot of uses that can go in either one, okay? Hotels, restaurants, offices, you know, everything except retail. Retail only fits in commercial, so we have to change it for the Costco request. But there's a lot of uses in the, in the table that allow, are allowed in both districts, so it's very compatible. So the Plan Commission acted on what's called a resolution to amend the land use plan that was adopted by the resolution, by the Plan Commission back on May 7. And by the state statutes, anytime you change your land use plan, the council has to act on an ordinance. So you have an ordinance in your packets that says the request to change this 23.27 acres from the business park to the general commercial. If that is approved favorably tonight, it's on the agenda, then there would be a request to change the zoning from this business park to the general commercial. Again, this is the area that we're focusing on. This is our zoning map. You can see there's a lot of red commercial land in the nearby area. They would change this to red. We have an ordinance in your packet showing the, for the zoning change, there's an exhibit that shows the 23 acres and the legal description of the land. It was a complete application showing the 23 acres and the legal description. The recommendation by staff is to approve the ordinance as well as approve the rezoning. These require two readings unless that second reading is waived by the council. So I will stop there right now. Oh, no, I'll continue. Then we also have conditional use permits on part of the hearing. We, as staff, I went through and determined that they need two public, two, I'm sorry, two conditional use permits for the vehicle service and the gasoline sales. Again, the site is the same site, it's the same layout, but the gasoline sales is in this location, and this is the tire service center. The tire center, you can see in the lower right, has a total of five car bays, and here it says tire center where it is in the store. It's very, a small percentage of the overall floor plan is the tire center. It's not like this is a 161,000 square foot tire center. It's very small, but it is automotive vehicle service, so it does require conditional use. Regarding the gasoline pumps, there, again, it was written in the hearing, 12 pumps to serve up to 24 vehicles with, they do show this faded area here. That's four additional pumps with, for eight more vehicles. We're not approving a Buc-Ee's tonight. This is a smaller scale. It's a typical gas station, but it is very critical to their operations, so they do ask for that. So they provided a very detailed site plan of the, of the layout of the pumps, where they would be. You can see the traffic circulation there. Part of one of our standards is to run truck turning. Here's their Costco fuel delivery truck, and they can obviously make all the swings. They serve the thing from out this area here, so they can get their vehicles in and out of the site. Their tanks are a proven tank in the petroleum industry. They've provided their tanks to the common council in there. They've also have a spill prevention plan that's required, and I didn't include all the sheets, but I just wanted to show you that it's in there. It's in your packets as well. So, so we have standards for conditional uses, and the burden is always on the applicant to prove that they can conform to these, and they have to have the council in agreement that they've, they've met all of the standards. So for vehicle service, all repair and service shall be within the building. No outside storage shall be allowed. No, all vehicles shall be parked in a designated stall on a paved surface area. Security cameras shall be installed as required by the police. Customer service hours are between seven and eight, and then must comply with all other requirements. And the common council did change that to 8:30 hours. And then for the gasoline sales, all tanks shall meet the federal safety requirements, including double walled line tanks. No deliveries are allowed. The council did change that to extend the fuel deliveries back in May. They shall demonstrate onsite truck turning movements. They've showed that. Security cameras, outdoor storage plan shall be subject to review. Should provide the number and location for all onsite electric charging stations, which at this time is zero. They did respond with a detailed response showing all of how they are complying with all of the standards for both the gasoline sales as well as the vehicle service and repair. This was back in late April, they provided this. A conditional use permit was drafted and included in your packet for review. Plan Commission did recommend this to you with a positive recommendation, and back in May 7, and staff recommends that you approve the conditional use permit.
Thank you. Thank you, Jason. At this time, we'll have the public hearing. At this time, I will call your name. If you could please come up to the podium, list your, state your name, the street address that you live in, and which, what community, and be happy to hear your thoughts on this public hearing. We're focusing only on the Costco amendment, CUP, an amendment that's at this time. Some of the other comments will come later in the council meeting. So I'm going to call up Lynn Wright.
Lynn Wright, 707 Marigold Street, City of Oconomawak. Okay, I'm not for Costco. This is the country having that big monstrous building. It, I'm just not for it, but I know you guys are going to do it anyways. So with that said, it's going to be the biggest Costco in the Midwest. The amount of traffic is going to be horrendous. The safety is going to be horrendous. You, every single one of you know my love of the Lake Country Trail, and it crosses Sawyer Road, okay? And ER and goes there. So that's going to be impacted with all this traffic, so I hope that's being considered to figure out something so that we don't get hit on our bikes. Thousands of people use that trail, kids, everybody. So, as you all know. So that's one of my concerns. And when things like this, the taxes doesn't make up for the increase, and you're all worried about all this water, what's, you know, they use in resources from police, fire, EMS, everything increases. They're going to want to hire more police officers. It's going to drain the fire department. All this has been proven when any of these big monstrous retailers come in. So, thank you.
Thank you, Lynn. Mike Teas.
Oh, Mike Teas, 1771 Derby Lane, City of Oconomawak. I'm just calling to express both mine and my wife's support of Costco. We think it's a good location for it. We think it's good for the city. It'll drive business for other retailers. And we think it's a good plan. We think the infrastructure in place is sufficient to support it, especially with the rerouting of Pabst Farm Boulevard, which everyone's probably aware of, it's under construction. But anyway, that's, I think it's well thought out, well planned, and it's a perfect place for it.
Thank you. Mike Dolan.
Evening, everybody. Mike Dolan, 1729 North Davies Drive.
Are you in this city, or what municipality?
I'm in Village of Summit.
Okay.
It's interesting, if you read the history of Pabst Farm, the Pabst family was well ahead of their time as far as progressive ideas about land management. I was blessed to move here 50 years ago, buying in the northeast corner of Lower Namibin Lake, the interstate bisects upper and Lower Namibin. When I moved here, there was a Texco and an ANW on Highway 83, and there was nothing here except a half mile down the road called Olympia. You knew moving in, those are major thoroughfares. They go from miles city to city to city. You knew there were going to be a commercial area like they are now. Bottom line is Sawyer Road is a six mile farm road that goes nowhere other than to Highway 18 and down to Highway 16. Bottom line, when I moved here, there are four lakes, and they're still here, fortunately. Right before the construction or the idea of the Pabst Farms came into being, the people on the four lakes said, we need to do something about being good stewards. We put in sewers at a very expensive rate. We're still paying for it. Bottom line is, when the DNR checked the lake three years ago, right in front of my house, water quality A+. Lac La Belle cannot stock walleye. They have trouble. For your information, Namibin in Native American tongue means common fish. To them, it was the walleye. So our, I'm on Walleye Lake. I don't fish. The bottom line is, we scored A+ by the DNR for the walleye because they've come back. Lakes like La Belle can't do it. Another thing that's happened in the last 25 years since this thing came about, I live on a thing called Eagle's Nest. I've got postcards of, from over 100 years ago showing eagles because they all went there. It's the high point. Guess who arrived in the last 20 years? The eagles came back. They love the high spot even though I-94 is now there. Bottom line is, they love the spot. Eagles return. By the way, eagles and walleye, the fishermen know this, are extremely light sensitive, okay? The light that I could show you, if I was able to present it here, the last couple weeks, the light pollution is unbelievable, okay? And that's just from Farm Fleet. Okay, next thing that's interesting, we have 356, at least this is May's account, of the migratory birds that have come through our lakes. The pelicans even came back to our lake in the last 20 years since this project began. The zoning was good to start. Obviously, we're not going to stop progress. You did a good job zoning. You shouldn't dezone it now. Another very important thing that's happened is we have three bars just a half mile east, and we have a boat launch. The bars when I moved in, two cars, three cars, one car. They now have 30 cars, 20 cars. Throw that in with people trying to drive into the boat launch. Go one step further in the last 15 years. COVID helped us too. Bottom line is a thing called standup paddleboards. Kayaking, good stuff. I love people on the lake. The lakes are all of ours. Bottom line is, I'm riding my bike down Sawyer Road last year. There's the bridge over the Bark River. 20 years ago, zero cars on a Saturday. 92 cars parked along Sawyer Road. It's one thing having cars, but when you're dragging your boat down the street and you got two little kids following you crossing, let me tell you, it's a disaster ready to happen. Go one step further. My son and I, we've done the whole state of Wisconsin, back and forth on our bikes, up and down. We've even ridden across America. The 6,000 miles we've done in Wisconsin across America, the most dangerous intersection we've ever encountered. We also did across Scotland on single lanes. Those were okay. The most dangerous intersection on our bikes, and we're pretty good bikers, is right underneath I-94. Go and look at the ramps coming down. It's not a loop. The cars are shooting down, and they're blinded because what? The overpass. That is an extremely dangerous intersection, roundabouts, for anybody on a bike or walking a dog, et cetera. And so I think, I don't think, it would behoove us to be good stewards. Nothing wrong with 83 being a huge commercial area, and nothing wrong with 67 being a huge commercial area, because they're right off the interstate. This is really not right off the interstate. Sawyer Road is not a major intersection, but it's going to be a nightmare for safety, not just for bikers, but people and cars. So I would hope that we would think of the four lakes and all the other lakes in the Lake Country, the pollution, even, some is pretty good. They don't use salt in roads most time. How much salt is going to end up in these parking lots? And where is that salt going to go? Less than a quarter mile away, half a mile for Upper Neshota. Bottom line is, you've got four beautiful Bottom line is, you've got four beautiful lakes and the Bark River that goes all the way down to Whitewater, and we're going to dump salt in there. I guarantee you, there's going to be a lot of salt used in that parking lot during the winter. I thank you for your time. Shout out to Mr. Jason, was awesome on the phone. So you've got a great employee there, we should be proud of Jason. Did a good, good job.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I do not have any more blue cards for this public hearing. Is there anyone else that would like to speak with regard to the public hearing? At this time, the public hearing is now closed. We're going to move on on the agenda to, like to entertain a motion for the approval of minutes for May 20th, 2025.
So moved, Alderman Kloth.
Second, Ellis.
Any questions or comments? Call roll, please.
Alderman Alderman Kloth.
Here. Hi.
Alderman Ellis.
Hi.
Alderman Spiegelberg.
Hi.
Alderman Mulder.
Hi.
Alderman Shellpepper.
Hi.
Alderman McConnell.
Hi.
Alderman Youngworth.
Hi.
Alderman Rosick.
Hi.
Now we'll move on to the comments and suggestions from citizens. I do have a couple of blue cards on that. This is a part of every council meeting where citizens and area residents have the opportunity to share any topic that they would like to discuss with the common council. We try to limit you to three minutes. It's not a two-way dialogue, it's your opportunity to share your thoughts with the council. And I'll start off with Lynn Wright. Welcome back.
Welcome back. Lynn Wright, 707 Marigold Street, City of Oconomok. Okay, I'm going to applaud all of you. Finally, 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 my Lampum Street is getting paved and I'm loving it. And although, you know, I haven't been able to drive on it because it's been so bumpy, what I like, what I'm thrilled about even more is finally that bike path. Since Nature Hill has been built, and I can't remember, I've lived in this house for 10 years, so I don't know, I can't remember how long Nature Hill's been there, but that big, beautiful, wide, paved bike path is going to go from Lisbon all the way, well, to Lake Bluff, but then there's a path to get them to Nature Hill. The amount of kids that have walk on Lampum and walk in the grass, I always said right when I moved there, why isn't there a path? Why isn't there a path? So I'm thrilled, and the amount of bikes, if you go there, the bikes or bike racks are always filled at that school. So that's going to improve safety for those kids and, you know, not to mention that road will now not be bumpy. And it's quite a sight to see those trucks in front of my house and, I don't care how noisy, I don't care, I'm happy it's getting to go. And then other, real quick, going on the fluoride thing, I'm going to be, I was going to, I just haven't had a chance to, to send you all an email with an invite. There's a holistic dentist, I've been going to holistic dentist for 15 years, okay? So I'm all about this, no fluoride and chemicals and everything. So Bionica Dental Wellness at Delafield is having an open house on June 18th from 4:00 to 7:00 PM. That might be a good opportunity for, I'll be going, but for you guys to go, maybe talk to the dentist. I've been going to somebody up in Port Washington, that, my doctor, but I might try to switch. And I went to Whole Health Dentistry in Peewakki, Dr. Brian Schwartz, he's awesome too, and he'd be a one, these would be great resources to fill you in about fluoride and teeth and how dangerous it is from people who have been doing this for decades. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next up is Bobby Hollenbeck.
Hi, I'm Bobby Hollenbeck.
Welcome.
Hi, thank you. And thank you to Charles Shellpepper and the clerk for answering all my phone calls and being so nice. I'm here about the sandtail crane that was shot. There are a lot of people who are very afraid to come here, but I'm not. I did my research as much as I could. Obviously, they're federally protected in Wisconsin, we don't have hunting of them. I do realize he did get a license from U.S. Fish and Wildlife. I talked to the DNR today and they had their person call me back right away, and he said that unfortunately, you know, the permit was done, but he said this has never, ever happened in a city, in a residential area. And if you know Maple Street, I live in the orchards, we're very far apart from each other. I'm lucky to have two acres, tons of wildlife, I love it. But those houses are super close together. And so to be shooting it like that. And then when I talked to U.S. Fish and Wildlife, he said that, well, he had taken measures. Well, his measures was a fake coyote in a mirror. Well, they look in the mirrors and they think it's another crane, and then that just gets them more excited. So, you know, I looked up the measures and it would have taken him about a minute to look that up, and anything motionally will scare them away. I mean, if you put up foil ribbons, we have a neighbor who has a garden that's fenced in with foil ribbons all over so nothing bothers it. You can put up foil tape, you can put up those flags that they have in car dealerships that move, you can put up wind chimes, you can put up pinwheels, those are all things that scare them away. If you have bird feeders and things, they come for those. They normally eat grubs, mice, insects, I mean, they're kind of natural pesticide helpers. So I asked if he had done all that and I didn't get an answer, and I realized his car was scratched, but his windows weren't damaged. And the other thing he could have done if he didn't want to tarp his car or if he didn't have a garage, is he could have covered his windows, even with newspaper, which would have been very cheap. So there's a lot of very upset people about this, and I don't want this to be a slippery slope and a precedent where we're going after federally protected animals. I mean, they're protected for a reason. And Wildlife in Need was extremely upset, they were trying to call the mayor, because they would have come out, this is what they do, and they have ways to catch the birds. I mean, they do this all the time. We've called them when we've had injured animals, and they would have tried to find the mate because they do mate for life, and now this mate is sitting on eggs with no mate. So I just think it's a very bad precedent to set. I hope it doesn't happen again. The crane was running away when it kept getting shot, and there were children who saw it, there were neighbors there who saw it, and there were a lot of upset people. You know, I know it's controversial, there's people that don't like it wrecking their lawns, but they're migratory, and if you look around, we have conservancies everywhere, we have forests everywhere, and we're building up all of our farmlands and our forest areas, and people get upset about the deer. I'm not anti-hunting. I eat meat, but not in the city. It's one of those things where it's like, you start doing that, you know, it's like gassing the geese because they're pooping on your boat houses, or bow hunting over by River Bluff where I know people's dogs were almost hit.
I'm going to have you try to wrap it up, please.
Okay, I know, it's like three minutes. So I'm just hoping that we cannot have this be a precedent in the future. Wildlife in Need wants me to, you know, let them know how it went. So I thank you for your time, and I just think it's very important. There are a lot of people that were very afraid to come and speak up.
Well, that's too bad, they shouldn't. And thank you for coming and sharing your opinion. Wildlife in Need is a wonderful organization. The National Crane Foundation in Baraboo, Wisconsin is, is exceptional.
Yes.
And so things happen, and we try to take and look at every item and then try to move forward from it. But I can tell categorically that our police officers did nothing wrong.
I'm not saying they did. I know he had a permit.
And I just want to make sure that that's really clear. We don't comment usually on these public, we just let you speak, but I think this is an important issue, that nobody wants to see any harmful animal, you know, have to be euthanized.
Right.
So we fully understand it, and I think we have.
I understand it. I just wish she could have done more to stop it.
And we, we have done a debrief and we're talking about it, so.
Okay.
You can go back and report to, to the group that they do a wonderful job, and I think what's important is that all communities, not just Oconomok, need to know that, that that organization exists.
Right.
A lot of people have no clue that it exists.
Right, but they also need to know what to do to repel them, you know, things that move repel them.
Thank you very much for coming in.
Thank you.
Any other comments from the audience? Without hearing any more, we're going to move on. I'd like to entertain a motion for the consent, consent agenda items, A through C.
So moved.
Second. Just a quick question. Normally you move the mayoral appointments up so the volunteers don't have to sit through the whole meeting?
Oh, is she here?
Yeah, I believe, I think so.
Oh, great, I am so sorry. Yes, we have a motion, a second, all in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Opposed? Onto, without objection, I'd like to move item 12A forward, thank you, Jennifer. The confirmation of the Jefferson County appointment to the library board, Melissa Howe. I'm sorry, I didn't know that you were there. Any objections? So we have the appointee to the library board. Would you come up and introduce yourself, please? And again, I apologize, I didn't see you there.
That's okay, no problem. I'm Melissa Howe, I live in Exonia, so in Jefferson County.
Close.
Yeah, and I am just an avid user of the library, Oconomok Library. My husband is a teacher in the district, and I also work at Rogers in Oconomok, so I am excited to be part of this.
Great, thank you. Council, do you have any questions or comments? Thank you very much for coming and introducing yourself to the council. I'd like to entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Any further questions or comments? Call roll, please.
Alderman Alderman Kloth.
Hi.
Alderman Ellis.
Hi.
Alderman Spiegelberg.
Hi.
Alderman Mulder.
Hi.
Alderman Shellpepper.
Hi.
Alderman McConnell.
Hi.
Alderman Youngworth.
Hi.
Alderman Rosick.
Hi.
Under our committee reports, Consider Act on Resolution 25-R, 3288 authorizing an escrow mound for TIF 14 Project, the Village Green. Ms. Sullivan Murray.
Thank you.
With your last night as our finance director for the City of Oconomok.
So tonight, I have a resolution for you to escrow funds for TIF 4. So TIF District 4 is our downtown TIF district. The expenditure period for TIF 4 will end in September of 2025. We do have one outstanding project for the TIF district, however, so in an effort to retain those funds for the purpose of the Village Green project, should it move forward, we would like to create an escrow fund, which would be a separate investment fund for just those dollars that could be held until, well, through 2026. So the expenditure period ends in September, that means no more new projects. This is a project that's already planned and budgeted, so we would escrow the funds. TIF number four, the good news is, TIF number four, well, it has an additional five years of life, we will look to close that TIF in 2026. So no more new increment coming from there. When we, when we close the TIF, we notify the Department of Revenue, that would be next year in April, and then they give us one year to finish, finish up our work, get it audited, and then any remaining funds are distributed to the taxing jurisdictions. So we talked in committee a little bit, and it's like, well, how long would that be? We'd have to have everything done by March of 2026, and by that, I mean, the audit needs to be done by then. And you have to allow for audit schedules and that kind of thing. So to be safe, I would say that you would want to have your Village Green project finished by the end of '26, to give the auditors a couple of months to get it, you know, all of their work done. But I think with the escrow, it does give the council a little bit of flexibility here if you still want to move that project forward to kind of retain that amount of funding for that. So the resolution tonight is to create the escrow account.
Questions or comments from council? Commission?
You said that green needs to be finished or paid for? Like, could we, if we paid for any projects upfront, does that satisfy, or does the work have to be done?
The dollars need to be expended, the TIF eligible dollars need to be expended. I would say by the end of 2026. The whole project doesn't need to be done, the, the, the parts of the project that are going to be paid for with TIF dollars would need to be completed and those dollars spent. Any unspent dollars, when the auditors come to audit, will need to be redistributed, will not be allowed to be used any longer.
Alderman Spiegelberg?
Well, and the good news is, since we need to use this for the specific purposes, infrastructure will be one of our main things that we start on the Village Green. But this is the first time we've ever done this with a TIF, where we've taken monies like this and put them into an escrow. There was some uncertainty prior when we were voting on the Village Green as to whether we were, we would be able to preserve this money.
Right.
But now we are, and I think this gives us some hope that we still have these dollars to put towards that fantastic project at the Village Green, so.
Right.
Thank you for your hard work on that, too.
At the time when we were planning this, basically, you know, when the project didn't go through, but the council still wants to talk about the project, we did some research. We talked with our financial advisor, we talked with our auditors and the Department of Revenue, so this isn't something that we've invented, it's something that happens in other cities, we just haven't done it here in Oconomok yet. But since there's an outstanding project, this is the route that you need to take to legally put those funds aside to spend past September of 2025.
Any other questions or comments from council? Like to entertain a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Any further questions or comments? Call roll, please.
Alderman Alderman Kloth.
Hi.
Alderman Ellis.
Hi.
Alderman Spiegelberg.
Hi.
Alderman Mulder.
Hi.
Alderman Shellpepper.
Hi.
Alderman McConnell.
Hi.
Alderman Youngworth.
Hi.
Alderman Rosick.
Onto our next item.
I'm sorry, hi. Yeah, I, I had to clear my throat before.
Onto Consider Act on Resolution 25-R, 3286, granting renewal of the 2025-26 alcohol beverage licenses. Gina?
Sure, so the resolution is for all licensed premises that have submitted their applications for renewal by the deadline and the new license period starting July 1st. They meet all the licensing requirements and state statutes, and this item has been reviewed this evening by Protection and Welfare, and they're sending their recommendation for adoption.
Like to entertain a motion?
So moved, Rosick.
Second, Ellis.
Any further questions or comments? Call roll, please.
Alderman Alderman Kloth.
Hi.
Alderman Ellis.
Hi.
Alderman Spiegelberg.
Hi.
Alderman Mulder.
Hi.
Alderman Shellpepper.
Hi.
Alderman McConnell.
Hi.
Alderman Youngworth.
Hi.
Alderman Rosick.
Hi.
Onto our Plan Commission items, we have four items here that Mr. Gallo is going to work with us on. The first one up is Consider Act on the Certified Survey Map to Divide One Lot Into Two Located at the South of Paps Farms Boulevard, North of I-94, West of Sawyer Road, Identified as Tax Key, hashtags OCOC0630.999.017. Mr. Gallo.
Thank you, Mayor. We have a land division being done by what's called a Certified Survey Map. This is obviously for the Costco project that's before us tonight. There's four things on the agenda, they all pertain to Costco. The land is currently shaped like this. These are large tracts of the Paps Farms area. You can see, it's kind of got a peculiar shape to it, they would like to divide it off. One thing that's important to see is this yellow line here, this is the extreme far southeastern area of the city. This is actually in the Village of Summit. So this line matches the Certified Survey Map right here. So that's very consistent. So what's happening is this, this area up here that sticks out is being divided off. It's still large enough to, to be developable, but that most likely would be combined or re, re-divided into this, this other area over there. So this is a, the 23-acre parcel right here for the Costco. We have a permission letter from Paps Farms, who is the owner, that you can act on, on this application. The document was reviewed for technical changes and, and everything that we've asked for, they've completed. The Plan Commission did send this forward with a recommendation to approve the Certified Survey Map.
Questions or comments from council? Alderman Mulder.
Since this is the first of four votes that you vote on this one, you're probably going to
Since this is the first of four votes that you vote on this one, you're probably going to vote on the rest of them, I guess. I've, I've, I really appreciated the comments from the gentleman who lives on Lower Noshota, I guess. Yes. So thank you, thank you. A lot of, a lot of good insights and good history lesson there. I didn't grow up around here, so I don't know some of that, but I think there's a lot of good considerations there. I've generally been in favor of this, but I just recently have been, you know, thinking about that, the impact of that gas station on, you know, a couple of local gas station owners, as well as, you know, QuickTrip, which is a Wisconsin corporation, the tires, you know, the impact on Big Bear and other, you know, local providers. It does, it, it's not out of, it feels like the right place to put a Costco. It's just, is it the right? Is it the right, are we the right community for a Costco, I guess, is, is my question. I'm not currently a member. I used to be. So I don't have recent experiences with it. So I'm, I don't know if there's other conversation we'll have, but I, I'm, I'm hesitant to, to just vote on, vote yes on this, and I'm just interested if other people have other opinions on council they'd like to discuss.
So let's, let's open it up. I mean, we're on this specific item, but because they're all tied together, let's have the discussion because they all follow in a methodical and the appropriate one. Alderman Altman-Cloth.
I agree a lot with what you just said, Matt. You know, like when the second QuickTrip went in, there was a lot of concerns about the Lake Country Trail right there. You know, I'm a very loyal person for Hare's. You know, it's a family-owned place right in the city. I don't think a Costco will take my business away from Hare's. And I think those of us that are loyal to, like, our local guys are going to stay loyal. I mean, at least I hope they would. But no, I mean, this is not an easy one. And the point that Lynn Wright brought up about the trail, I mean, that's, and that's, that's, I used to bike over there and run over there a lot, and that's probably one of the worst parts on the Lake Country Trail that you kind of deal with, other than like where the boat launch is, where you have to kind of get off and go on the road and then, you know, get back on. And if, you know, that one bar is busy, that's, that is not a fun area. So I just, I hope, you know, people like Mrs. Wright and, you know, yourself that came in, I mean, these are very concerning. But I also feel that, you know, a Costco could bring a lot of good benefit, too. So it's, it's, it's kind of weighing the good and the bad, and making the pros and cons list, and then kind of voting on that. And it was a little disheartening to hear one of the public comments say, "You're going to vote on this anyways." And it's like, I wish they, I, I, and I mean this respectfully, but I wish our constituents realized that we do struggle with these votes. Like, this is not, we don't just wake up one day and go, "We're just going to say yes to everything." Like, we're very thoughtful about it, and I think I can speak for the council on that.
No, I think that's a very, that's a very good comment, and I support that 100%. I think there are a lot of neat opportunities with this development, and I think that if we want to grow that corridor, that this is a very good direction to go, and that's a normal land use for that area. But there are always going to be pros and cons. What's kind of, just as a comment for council, we have a public hearing. We have one resident who's for it that spoke. We have no city residents that are against it, even here. We have one non-resident, and very well-spoken, and appreciate your comments, and thank you for coming. But usually, if it's something that the community doesn't want to support, this place would be packed. And that, that was kind of surprising. I thought we'd have more pros and cons, based because it is a larger, a larger box store. So that was, that was surprising to me tonight. Other comments from council before we move along. Alderman Shellpepper.
Just on the land division part, so the part that's going to be divided off, that's not going to be part of Costco? Who's going to own that, then? Is that going to continue to be the Paps that owns that?
Right. Paps Farms owns all of this land, and the, the remnant piece that's being divided off, it's called out as remainder of Outlot 2 of the CSM. That'll be owned by Paps Farms.
Okay, so that doesn't have anything to do with the three outlots, then?
Correct.
Okay. When do the subdivision of the lot, the larger lot, not the remnant, when does that take place procedurally? Is that, that's something we have to vote on, too, right, eventually?
Not tonight. It's down the road. They don't know what they want to do with that area. That could be future parking, or they could sell it off as, as outlots.
And council, if you'd like to ask the applicant, they are here today. So if you have questions, we're happy to bring them up as well.
I have two questions. Take it back on to that one. If we're subdividing that small one, it'll be a third lot in that area, and that lot would naturally be for sale on its own, where it would, somebody would have to build essentially a very small strip mall or retail. And there are, what, is it automatically going to be included in the much larger lot?
It's not automatically included, no. It's not a small lot. I mean, if this is a 23-acre site, this is probably about a 10-acre leftover piece. So it, it's, it's not small. They don't know the outcome. They want the most flexibility they can get for the area, you know, everything west of the Costco site, all the way to the woods, that's not going to be developed. It's, it's, it's a large area. There's probably around 40 acres in there. So we're, we don't know what that's going to look like. They are always talking to prospective tenants to locate there, but they don't have anything, no plans to show the city at this time.
And my, my struggle is the, well, specifically now the outlots being in front of Costco. I, I think a lot of people are in favor for Costco, but if we were to poll the city about having potentially three, maybe even low, low-value retailer, value retailers, I won't name them out, I think we all know what I'm talking about, but having another strip mall in that area, then creating another lot that really only a strip mall could go to, all of a sudden, we've created something that I don't think was the entire vision for that area, and a lot of people would not support that. I think Costco's great. It's a great economic add to the city, wonderful projects, but having outlots planned where there isn't, we would have no control over it if we do this, rezone it, have no control what's going to go in there, and all of a sudden, it could be something we really don't want as a city. But we've made this decision, and we've set ourselves up for having no out in the future.
Well, you're not approving the outlots tonight. That you will have control. There's a Certified Survey Map.
But it is included in the rezoning, so if we rezone it, we, Costco could say, "Hey, like, we're going to do this right here. We own that land." So if we rezone that entire area without any protection against the outlots, we have no protection about what goes there. But I, I take issue with that.
The development would align with the new zoning, that's correct. But you, they have to go through the process in each one of these outlots if something is going to happen. And if you watch what this company has done, they'll either, a lot of times, they leave these areas empty. So they're trying to see how these areas go. They're eventually, will probably put something there. The council will have some control over it, but it's still going to then be aligned with this new zoning. That is correct. But, you know, there's, this whole area has so much potential, but there's just not enough definition. What typically happens is you get a large anchor store like a Costco, which then brings in other potential development right on the interstate. This is not downtown Oconomowoc. This is right on the interstate. And I understand your concern, but also, none of us have the crystal ball. But you're correct that they would be allowed to build something there, allowed by zoning, but they still have to go through every process for those buildings that they're doing right now. So yes, there's input from the city. Alderman Rosak goes.
Yeah, I've got a couple of things. Matt, you said right away, this is the right spot. I think that, that's a big part of where I'm going with this. I, I don't know what else is going to go in that corner, frankly, on, on a bypass, or, you know, the Onlet Offlet ramp, I-94. It's kind of ideal for a Costco, for people to come in and out there. There is the issue with it crossing the trail there. I, I do recognize that. But frankly, the Lake Country Trail from that point, all the way to where it restarts in Della Field proper, by the river, is garbage. I mean, you can't bike it with a family. You can't go through Venice Beach area safely with a family right now. So you're either starting at one end of Lake Country Trail and ending, or you're going back into Oconomowoc. Going through Venice Beach area is, is, we've never dri, I mean, it's right by my house. We've never gone that way, because it's way too dangerous. And that spot is probably more dangerous than the crossing. But, you know, the, the other, the big plus for Costco is taxes for schools and parks. They're, they're, they're not asking for TIF. They're, they're paying the full rack rate for schools, for CTC, for county taxes, and taxes in general. Right now, that land is all ag. We're getting no taxes. I think the parcel right now's taxes are like $700 a year. Commercial development allows us to continue to grow the tax base without having to put more pressure on us personally for schools. So Costco's not going to bring school, you know, they're not going to have schoolchildren going to school there, but they're going to bring a massive amount of tax base that alleviates my need to have more school taxes, or CTC, or county taxes. Those are big pluses for me. To the mayor's point about the comments, I really expected more people to be here tonight, too. Having, you know, living essentially over the berm from this thing. I have, I've heard no negative comments from anybody in my district, at all. The only two people I've heard from live in the Village of Summit in some, in the newer subdivision, and they've moved in recently. And when I pressed them on where they live, they finally admitted they don't live in the city even. So, you know, if I heard a lot of really negative from my folks, I might question it. And look, we, we've had some different developments that we actually have killed over the past. I came into council about 12 years ago during the walkaway Walmart era, and there were hundreds of people here in, in the overfill, and they were wearing red shirts and the whole nine yards, because it was going to be a massive Walmart and a Sam's Club. And, and that's really not what we're getting. We're getting something different. As far as the outlots, I'm not too worried about that. If we, if we didn't rezone, they're going to probably put something there. I did talk to Brian Bell before the meeting today. Right now, there, there's zero plans. Costco typically, my understanding is Costco in the past is under-parcelled. So some of their other spots, they, they bought in two smaller parcels, and then if they have to expand the parking lot, or they want to add a few, you know, spots onto the gas station, they, they're just stuck, and then they have to pay a premium to buy land next to them, because everyone knows, I'm next to Costco, I'm going to sell my land at a premium. So that's my understanding, but anything could go there, just like it go, going along the strip. It could be a bank. It could be, you know, a, pick your spot, a Chick-fil-A, a bank. It could be a lot of things in the commercial. So I'm not overly concerned about that. And then the other question I had for point of order, are these all second readings? Do we need to waive second readings for these if we do this?
Yes.
Do they require second readings? It's not on the agenda as such.
Not the Certified Survey Map.
Which one requires a, a second reading?
The next two.
The next two.
Two.
I think that's in ordinance.
Is read.
Okay, so the next, not the CUP?
Not the CUP, no.
Okay, just wanted to be clear on that. Thank you.
And the other, the other aspect, too, is labor. I mean, they're going to be bringing jobs, which I think is a positive thing to our community as well. Alderman Spiegelberg?
And I have gone back and forth on this so much, too. I'm not sure if this is the right place or community, as, as Mulder said. If we don't rezone this, it stays a business park. It'll still get developed, but at maybe a lesser impact to the area. I appreciate the gentleman who brought us up to speed on so many things that I was not aware of. And for me, I think it comes down to the fact that because it's not a sure thing, because we don't know, the negative, the potential negative impacts of this outweigh the potential benefits. And I still think that area will, will get developed, some lesser impact, business park or whatever. It's a fantastic area, and it will be developed, and we will get those tax, tax dollars, but I'm just not sure the Costco is, is the right thing, or the right decision.
Alderman Altman-Cloth?
I'm good. Actually, Matt kind of touched on what I was going to say.
Okay, good. Alderman Shellpepper?
Yeah, we heard a little bit about, like, the impact of traffic and the increased traffic. I saw there was a traffic analysis study in there. Jason, are you able to speak to that? I mean, does this area already have the infrastructure and roads needed to handle the increased volume? There was a volume expected with the original development from like 2007. Are we going to still be within those bounds?
Well, I can speak a little bit to the traffic of what I know, and I know that the applicant Costco representative and, and Brian Bell are, are here. Traffic is going to increase, no doubt. Costco is a big traffic generator. I've driven by them on Saturdays. I'm not a member, but I've seen a full parking lot, so I, I do know they're going to increase. This is a, a pretty good spot for access off the freeway and back on the freeway. They did, are updating the traffic study that was done for the town center area over here, and there was some consideration given, but I don't think anyone dreamt of a Costco going in there. So they are updating that, and that is now at the state, and the county is going to review it as well. And I heard from the property owner that the preliminary results are that the intersections coming out, I'll just get to it, are going to require signal, signals, traffic signals, and those would be going in at the cost of, Paps Farms would pay for that. There's also a few off-site improvements needed up, up off Sawyer Road, and, and some turning, turning lanes and things, and those will all be completed. So it's going to generate a lot of traffic, but there, you know, there's a way of fixing that, so it's, as least amount of impact as possible. So there'll, there'll be traffic signals and some turn lanes added and some road widening areas.
So do we think it's going to be in, in increased traffic use than the town center that was originally planned for the area? Because I thought what I took from the traffic study was that it, it was going to be within those bounds.
The, the town center is, is way over here.
Oh, I get that.
And then, you know, down here, I think this, this area needs, I mean, we didn't know that a Costco would be going here with, with needing signals on, on Paps Farms Boulevard.
Okay, what about like the roundabout, though? That's the Sawyer Road roundabout. I mean, is that linked into the traffic analysis?
Oh, sure. They look at, they look at everything. I don't think that's being changed, but I haven't seen the traffic study.
Alderman Spiegelberg?
I wanted to add to my comments and say, although the house was not packed tonight with people against it, it doesn't mean there aren't a lot of people that are against it. I'm not a big one for social media, but there's been a lot of pushback on social media. And I guess I would like to say, I would like to be the voice tonight and the vote for those who are against the Costco. And I'm a member of Costco. I love Costco, but I just think we can do better than a Costco in that area.
I'm short, I promise.
Pardon me?
I'm short.
Go ahead. No, go ahead. We have plenty, we have plenty of time, you guys. This is an important vote.
Of Costco. I think it's a great employer. It's a reputable company. It adds value to Oconomowoc. I just struggle with this, it feels almost desperate, need to develop every square inch we possibly can in the name of taxes. I don't think we need the outlots. If we can get guarantees from Costco that that remains grass, or heck, even just put parks, call it parking right now, but we're, we're creating another really small parcel, and we don't have a plan for it. So we're doing this tonight without a plan for this other parcel that can only serve one purpose, and that's going to be a strip mall, or something really small that's going to add to our light pollution or things. I, I don't like making decisions without having all of the information, and I think there's a lot of information we currently don't have for this one.
And, and I, I agree with you. We don't have all the information, but at this stage, we can't have all the information. So what you're really looking at is, as you go through the voting process, you're either going to kill or support putting a Costco here, regardless of the outlots. And I think that you have an opportunity to put a really high-quality retailer that's a great employer, has a great reputation, and is coming into community that's really small. They don't put these things in communities like ours, but they're flanking it because of the location right on I-94. And the question council has to decide is, do the positives outweigh the negatives? And that's where the decision is. But I want you to think really, really hard, because you're going to be voting tonight, and you have one shot, and that's going to be tonight, to either pass it or not, when it comes to getting this process moving forward, because of how this thing is set up. Yeah?
I have a question. So item A is how it's zoned. So if we, could we vote in favor of rezoning it tonight, but then B or C, we're supposed to have a second reading on, and then not waive the second reading? Hopefully, maybe Costco could come back in two weeks and give us a little bit clearer direction on what those outlots are going to be, so that we, I would love to see this here. So then that way, we don't kill it tonight. And also, to Alderman McConnell's point, when a developer buys land, we don't have, within a little, we have a little say, but for the most part, we don't have a say on what they put in there. We didn't have a say on the Chipotle. We didn't have a say on the First Watch. That was Wongard's decision. So this is going to be Costco's decision, because, or Peter Bell, or whoever. So this is going to be Costco's decision because, or Peter Bell or whoever, because that's who owns the land. So I don't know if we can do it this way. My proposal would be, let's vote to change the zoning, but then not pass or not waive the second reading on the second two, and then hopefully Costco.
Let's, let's bring the applicant up, sir, if you'd introduce yourself. And I think the issue that we have is, what are your plans with the outlots? Or do you have any comments from what you've heard today?
Sure, yes. Good evening. My name is Steve Cross, Costco's real estate development director for the Midwest. Address is 1955 Raymond Drive in Northbrook, Illinois. So good evening, council members and mayor, appreciate being here. Very interesting, obviously, listening to the discussion here. So if I could just add some general comments, commentary on the project. When Costco looks for new locations, there's, there's two ways that we kind of look at it. One is we look at a completely new market, a new city where we just don't have any members. We're far enough away from any existing units that we're looking to expand into, you know, promising markets and areas. In this particular instance, you know, we already have 11 locations in, in Wisconsin. As you know, we've got the Peewalkie location, which is about 20 minutes to the east, and then we've got the units out in Madison there. So we look at this as, as kind of an infill unit, and we, we look at it, the second reason why we would come to a location would be to serve existing members. So we're looking at the facilities that we have, and as the growth of those facilities, kind of as, as the broker likes to say, the goldfish outgrows the goldfish bowl. I mean, that's something I've heard many, many times, and the only way you can deal with that is you move. You go find a bigger goldfish bowl. The other thing is, you can do is, you can bring in other units close by, within a certain distance that you can start to draw members away from the original unit and build up a new growth in the new unit there. So this is that perfect example of the second scenario, where we're looking to infill here. We already have, within this trade area, we've got about 17,000 households that already have Costco memberships here. So, you know, we're not coming into a new area and saying, we're going to suck all these members away from all these retailers here. We're coming in to serve our members. Now, granted, there'll be more people, it'll be like, great, there's a new Costco, close to my house, it's time I joined and, you know, became a member here. So we obviously want to encourage that growth as well, but we do look at it as the existing members. It was mentioned about jobs. You know, we will be bringing in a couple hundred high-paying jobs. I mean, we're the highest in the retail industry. The benefit packages are in the order of $40,000 to $50,000 for benefits. So somebody coming in and working part-time for 23 hours will get all those core benefits. So that's another reason. We do do transfers from other stores. We obviously bring in experienced employees, new man, the managers will come from other stores to run the stores, but we do hire from local. So we do want local employees to come in. Usually, that's about half of that, or more, slightly more than half, will be new hires from the local area. So that brings good-paying jobs to this area, more disposable income. And then we also bring in, it was also mentioned about Costco attracting other users here. That's the other thing that we do. We will bring in other retailers. I mean, there's places where we go in, and our broker's constantly saying, as soon as it's announced, he gets all these other retailers calling him and saying, you know, do you have an outlaw? Do you have a parcel? Or even the land sellers who sell to us, who have additional land, they start getting more calls once the Costco's coming in. So there's definitely the impetus of that, of bringing in, it's a destination. So we're going to bring in other shoppers to come in and shop within the entire neighborhood there. So getting to the outlaw questions, which is, which is obviously a big discussion here, you'll notice in this particular instance, we haven't, we've shown what it could look like with these three out parcels. I believe they're in the acre, quarter, acre and a half size, which is a fairly, you know, standard size for a small retail restaurant or something, or, or medical office, or a bank, or something like that. In this instance, we haven't put lot lines in there because we don't know what the lots are going to look like. So we've left it as part of the main Costco lot. It was, Jason correctly mentioned that there's multiple uses that we could use for that. We predict how much parking we are likely to need, and then we have these extra outlots, if we can, we can't always get them, but in this instance, we do have the land here, that in the future, if we realize that as we grow, you know, our sales grow here, that we might need more parking in the future, so we can easily expand into those areas. And within a number of years, three, four, five years, depending on how things are, we may look at subdividing those then and, and selling them off to other retailers. So I, I don't see us doing like a strip mall. That, that's not what we want in front of our store. We are very particular. We have what's called a reciprocal easement agreement, that we, when we sell land, the buyers have to sign on to that, and that will have a whole bunch of restrictions in it, that uses that we do not want to see in front of our building, whether it's a high-traffic use or an undesirable type of use. We will put that in there, so we don't just flip the, the parcel to anybody who wants to build something there. We have control over it, we have site plan approval rights over it. So it's a very controlled environment around a Costco store. We are very, very sensitive to our members, they're paying a fee to join us and come to us. So we treat them, and that's why we're, you know, such a successful retailer here, is the way that we treat our members, and we also take care of the facility.
What are those types of businesses that you prefer to have right next to the Costco?
It's, it's general, food, food establishments would be fine, banks, credit unions. I, I couldn't give you the exact list, but I mean, there is, there's a good list of items that can go there, but it's more about restricting the things that we don't want there.
Primarily low traffic?
Ideally, we'd like it to be low traffic. We try to avoid Chick-fil-A's, but we do have locations there, and we're very strict on how they lay the site out, so that the drive-throughs don't encroach into our driveways, but.
You mean the, you mean the, the lines waiting for this?
The lines, sorry, the lines, yeah, the line, the, the queues encroaching into our driveways there, the main driveways.
So if I'm hearing you correct, I think one request was, you know, maybe you could come back in a couple of weeks and give us more information on the three outlets? It doesn't sound to me, and I'm asking you, are you comfortable with that? Okay. I just want to make sure, because I'm trying to see if a delay is of any value in this process, and it doesn't appear to be.
I don't have a question, so I don't know if anybody else has questions.
Do you have any more questions?
Thank you. I mean, I was just, I was just going to comment on, I mean, we've got a Fleet Farm literally right there. I don't see, you know, how the Costco waters, waters it down, makes the area less desirable. I mean, it's zoned business park right now, which still has pretty significant uses associated with it. It's directly off the interstate, it seems like the perfect kind of location for something like this. So, yeah, generally, I, you know, I don't want to, you know, build up everything, but it's, it's a private property. It's, granted, we, we need to change the zoning, but the, the use that's currently allowed there is pretty intense as well, so it's hard for me to use the arm of government to prevent, you know, a successful company who's going to bring a lot of benefit to our community from, from doing that. It doesn't, it doesn't seem like the right thing to do.
Great discussions. Alderman Rosak.
Yeah, just one little, quick, look, we've been trying to do something in this area for like 20 years, and actually, Chaz's point about the Fleet Farm is spot on. I actually wrote in my notes, the Fleet Farm is probably a third larger than Costco, and it has not had, had a negative impact in the area on traffic at all. I mean, I go, I mean, I probably go to Fleet Farm like five times a week, because it's right there, and it's got everything I need. We'll probably use the Costco the same way. Those are ideal spots for, for this development. We've been waiting for something to kind of go in there and be an economic driver and impetus for more development for 20 years, and nothing has happened. We finally have that opportunity, and, and we're, we're considering, you know, saying no to it. I, I don't think that's the right call, so I'm, I'm voting in favor of this. I think it's the right call for the community in general, and for this area in general. I mean, we've got a lot of big developments along I-94, the ballpark, the commercial park, the hospital, the Fleet Farm. You know, this is, this is the area that, and frankly, we're landlocked moving forward. You know, the village has landlocked us. This is, we have to develop some land to keep our tax base moving forward and keep our mill rate low, otherwise, we're all going to pay more taxes. So those are my closing remarks.
Any other questions or comments on this item 9A?
I do have a question for the developer.
Yeah.
Hypothetically.
If you could please come up to the podium?
Sorry. Hypothetically, if we didn't split the lot out, are you still interested in taking it? And as you mentioned, you do, as part of your business model, you buy excess land for potential development. Are, if we didn't split it out, is, would Costco still be interested in taking that parcel?
No, we, we're just looking, I mean, the land is obviously very expensive, so we are just buying what we would need to buy for the property, for the project here.
That's one question, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? I'd like to entertain a motion for item 9A, please. Certified survey map.
Second.
Any further questions or comments? Call roll, please.
Alderman Altman Clothe.
Aye.
Alderman Ellis.
Aye.
Alderman Spiegelberg.
Nay.
Alderman Mulder.
Aye.
Alderman Shellpepper.
Aye.
Alderman McConnell.
Nay.
Alderman Youngworth.
Nay.
Alderman Rosak.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Motion carries. Let's move on to the next item. Consider act on ordinance 25-01101 to amend the city's comprehensive plan for 2050 to change the land use of the 23.26 acres from Business Park to general commercial designation located at Pabst Farms Boulevard, north of I-94 and west of Sawyer Road.
So move, waving second reading?
Second.
Altman Clothe.
Any further questions or comments? Call roll, please.
Alderman Altman Clothe.
Aye.
Alderman Ellis.
Aye.
Alderman Spiegelberg.
Nay.
Alderman Mulder.
Aye.
Alderman Shellpepper.
Aye.
Alderman McConnell.
Aye.
Alderman Youngworth.
Aye.
Aye.
Alderman Rosak.
Aye.
Onto our next item. Consider act on ordinance 25-01100 to rezone 23.26 acres from BP Business Park to GC General Commercial District. The parcel is tax key number OCOC 0630.999.017, located at the south of Pabst Farms Boulevard, north of I-94, west of Sawyer Road.
So move, waving second reading?
Second.
Any further questions or comments? Call roll, please.
Alderman Altman Clothe.
Aye.
Alderman Ellis.
Aye.
Alderman Spiegelberg.
Nay.
Alderman Mulder.
Aye.
Alderman Shellpepper.
Aye.
Alderman McConnell.
Aye.
Alderman Youngworth.
Aye.
Alderman Rosak.
Aye.
Onto our last of four items on the Costco. Consider act on the conditional use permit for Costco where, wholesale warehouse store to allow gas sales and vehicle sales. The parcel is a part of tax key OCOC 0630.999.017, and located south of Pabst Farms Boulevard, north of I-94, and west of Sawyer Road.
Mayor, remember, this is a conditional use permit. There are standards that have to be met, and the council should determine that the standards, that evidence have been provided, that the standards for these two different conditional uses have been satisfactory to the councils.
Like to entertain a motion?
So moved, Ellis.
Second, Rosak, and I'll just say, with regard to the two CUP standards for vehicle service and repair and gasoline sales, based on the record presented, the discussion here today and the materials submitted, I believe that they've met the CUP standards as set forth in our ordinances for those two uses.
Any further questions or comments? Alderman Spiegelberg.
Since the other votes have gone in the positive direction of Costco, and seeing as how now we have the CUP before us, I'll be voting for the CUP because they do meet all those standards, and in light of the previous votes, I think that's the best decision to make, so.
Call roll, please.
Alderman Altman Clothe.
Aye.
Alderman Ellis.
Aye.
Alderman Spiegelberg.
Aye.
Alderman Mulder.
Aye.
Alderman Shellpepper.
Aye.
Alderman McConnell.
Aye.
Alderman Youngworth.
Aye.
And Alderman Rosak.
Aye.
All right, on to, finish your old business. Thank you, the folks from Costco and from Pabst Farms. And thank you for the residents that have come to share your opinion. We do appreciate it, and you were heard. Consider act on ordinance 25-01098 to amend the general development plan for Market Square Commercial Development located at the northeast corner of Summit Avenue and Valley Road. This is the second reading. So this has been brought forward to you. Do you have any questions or comments for Mr. Gallo? Seeing none, I'd like to entertain a motion.
So moved, Ellis.
Second.
Any further questions or comments? Call roll, please.
Alderman Altman Clothe.
Aye.
Alderman Ellis.
Aye.
Alderman Spiegelberg.
Aye.
Alderman Mulder.
Aye.
Alderman Shellpepper.
Aye.
Alderman McConnell.
Aye.
Alderman Youngworth.
Aye.
Alderman Rosak.
Aye.
I'd like to go on to new business, and just to inform council that our item 11A has been postponed and will be on the 17th of June. The audit folks are, contacted us this morning and are unable, were unable to come this evening to present, but will be here on the 17th of June at our next council meeting. Like to move over to any staff reports? Laurie, would you like to come up and say a few words?
Like, no? You will. Take a bow.
Yes, we want the truth. We want the truth.
It's okay, I was your favorite.
You can't handle the truth. You can't handle the truth.
You were all my favorite.
What a diplomat.
It's really hard to believe that this is the last time I'm standing up here talking to everybody, but I can tell you, I'm looking forward to it, I'm not going to cry. No, I appreciate the opportunity working here. Economoc is really, it's a good place to work. I don't live here, I wish I did.
We have houses.
Yeah, you're going to build some more. I've enjoyed working with the council, the department heads, I have an excellent staff. The new guy coming in, you're going to like him, he's very well-qualified. I wish him, wish him all the best of luck moving forward, and all of you as well.
Well, Laurie, I think on behalf of all council, we'd like to thank you for everything that you did for us.
But you're not going to miss those late-night budget meetings.
Wait, hey Laurie, you need to get his new cell phone number so that Kevin doesn't call you.
So Mayor, one of the things I said at the department head this morning when we were closing out our meeting was, I, you know, highly complimented Laurie for everything that she's done for the city. When I took over as the city administrator three years ago, she was solid right there, and, you know, even before that, she was already starting to put all the processes and programs in place that we now really, really enjoy. You know, when you look back over the last couple of years, we've, everybody's been highly complimentary of the budgeting process, on the information that's available for transparency, and everything else that she's done. She's done a lot of work here, and I just really want to thank her for that, because she's going to be a tough act to follow. So, thank you, Laurie.
Stan, do you have any words?
Thanks, Laurie.[1660.23]
Have fun.
Any other staff? Then moving on, do we have any comments from the aldermen? Alderman Altman-Clothe?
I just want to say that it was very nice to see Alderman Ellis as part of the color guard twice within the last week. Once at the, was that, did I say it right? The color guard, right? Yeah, once at the Memorial Day thing. Well, the way he looked at me, he made me nervous. And then also, the high school did a great military ceremony for the kids going into the service. And then at the Memorial Day celebrations, also saw Alderman Rosick. And it's just great to see you guys come out and support those events because we have such a great and rich veteran community in our area. And Laurie, I make a motion for us to keep you.
I second.
Favor?
Aye.
Any other comments from Alderman? Alderman Rozak?
Yeah, Laurie, it has been an absolute pleasure working with you. It's been, I know we've had some really robust debates over the years, but I wish you the best in retirement. And I know you will miss budget meeting. Every once in a while, in October, you'll be like, wow, what can I be doing on a Tuesday night? You can always come and watch us, just for fun. Thank you for your service. I just circulated, I think it was two meetings ago, Jennifer, and I mentioned that we'd be interested in helping with raising funds for the police department, for ballistic helmets and their new body armor inserts. We've since put together a team to do that, including Captain Tim, Alyssa Roche at the police department, myself, Jennifer, Kevin, and Luke Kavieski for their first event, which is going to be, I just circulated, we encourage you guys to get the word out. We call it Protect Our Cops. It's at Wine Maniacs on Tuesday, July 22nd. We're hoping for this first part of the fundraiser to, you know, raise between 12 to 15 grand in this first event, you know, hopefully. If you know anybody that wants to donate items for the silent auction, we're doing some, some large items for a live auction, then probably a silent auction as part of it. So any assist we get from the folks here on the council would be awesome. And I will mention, Parker's Place Fitness is our actual first donor to the event. He doesn't bring, he didn't bring me the big check tonight.
Dude, I did. You know I did.
The big one. We need the big one. But he's the first one that stepped up to offer donations for this event and for this. So we hope it's a success. We encourage everyone to come, and that's all I have. Thanks, guys.
Any other comments from aldermen? I'm sorry, Kevin?
Laurie, thank you. Thank you for everything you've done for the city. Thank you for your patience. When I walked into your office and said, what is a TIF? What is that? A tid?
That was just last week, which is really awkward.
No, that was, that was about an hour ago, just so you know. Wow. I just want to thank you. I've, it's a hard learning curve, but you made it seem so simple and much easier. And I appreciate everything you've done. Thank you. And as far as Jennifer, what you had stated, it was my pleasure to do that, and I hope I've got many more years in me that I can do it again.